Hi, everybody. Thank you and welcome and thank you for coming. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast through Milford TV and other media. Are in attendance. If anybody would like to make a video or audio recording of this meeting, please let me know as well as any other school committee member. So we're gonna open with the approval of minutes. I hope everyone's had the opportunity to review the minutes from the last meeting on Thursday, May twenty third. If so, any discussion? No? Can I get a motion? Meg? Second by Chris. All in favor? Awesome. Okay, so let's move on to announcements and correspondence and distributions. Anybody have anything to uh?
I just want to say thank you to a lot of the parents and faculty that have been in the um the search for new principals and assistant super principals for Stacy.
Yes, sir.
It's been a long, I mean, I was involved in it and Craig, you were there as well. It's it's four or five hours of interviewing potential candidates and it's it's been a great experience and I actually love doing it every time we have these. I just just wanna say thank you for everyone that's turned out to do it. It's 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 worth it. I mean, we're all picking future teachers and principals for our schools, so it's it's good that the community gets involved in it and it was a good turnout, so I just wanna say thank you for everyone that was involved.
That's awesome. Thank you, Joe. Anybody else? Laura?
Just wanted to congratulate you on the class of two thousand nineteen, graduated this past weekend. We love your graduation and just wanna wish them all a wonderful future.
Awesome. Thank you. Meg?
Just two quick ones. So last night was the last concert at Stacy, the jazz band and the band concert for sixth and seventh grade. And the students, I know we have musicians here tonight, but they also did a tremendous job, so congratulations to them. And then just a plug, we do have our second office hour session this coming Tuesday from seven to eight P M. So at the Milford Town Library.
I think that's these two amazing gentlemen right here.
It is those two very qualified individuals will be there to speak, so we welcome the public to attend that as well.
That's awesome. Okay, thank you very much. I'd also like to take a second to congratulate everybody on the class, from the class of two thousand and nineteen, it was a extremely well-done event. I'd like to also congratulate and thank Joshua Ottlin and his staff as well as Kevin McIntyre and the administration
Thank you.
for putting on yet another flawless um graduation commencement. And Josh Ottlin, if you're watching, even with, you know, three people passing out, still no hiccups. So, great stuff. Thank you, everybody. So um if that's it, we'll move along. Do you wanna say anything?
I know, I'm good.
You're good, okay. So we're gonna move to invitation to speak. Uh does anybody here tonight have anything they'd like to come forward with? Going once, going twice, okay. And so now we're gonna move to the recognition of junior state music students. So do we have those folks in the audience?
Why don't you guys come right up to the view?
Yeah, come on. Do we have a list of names? There's Mr. Sami Ajo. Mr. Sami Ajo, how are you?
Good, how you doing?
Good. I see you're developing another onslaught of phenomenal music talent.
Absolutely, and yeah, they are right here.
Would you mind um introducing everybody or can everybody introduce themselves?
Joshua Anderson.
Zently Sereta.
Madeline Stockey.
Would you like a water?
This is Rishi Patel.
Okay, okay.
Umbria Matthew.
Kendall Dexter.
Very good. Jay, you wanna tell us about everything?
So every uh let's see, I guess it's in um Janu- late January or early February, the students that we choose to audition for the junior district band course and orchestra, and it's in a it's in a different um part of Mass- well, central Massachusetts every year. And we pick the kids who we think would excel. And this group here is six of the eight students that were accepted into the band. Uh so Josh, you were in the band for French horn, Zently, you were in the chorus. Uh Maddie, you were in the orchestra, Rishi's in the orchestra, Ria was in the chorus, and Kendall was in the orchestra. And two students who were not here today, um Arthur Gomes was in the band, and Kisha Dren was in the chorus as well.
Awesome. Alright, good. Congratulations, guys. Would would is there anything you'd like to say?
Nope.
Not all of one, don't speak at once.
I think they're more expressive with their.
Hey, you know, when you're. You could write us something, yeah, right. So Josh, I know you personally, so can you give us a little bit of uh personal insight on this? I hate to put you on the spot, but you know, you might too, so.
I mean, I was in it in both seventh grade and eighth grade. And it it's a lot of fun. It's it's you get to be with, like in normal band, uh like, no offense, but the music's a little simple. Um so, simple earth.
Earth, simple earth.
No offense, Jim.
So it's 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 fun to be in a in a place where we're all like have equal talents, I guess. We have ch- it's a challenge.
It's three chords, songs you play. That's fine. Right. That's that's amazing. So would you like to share some of your thoughts as well?
I just really like doing central districts because it's more, in chorus we do more sometimes pop songs or more pop musical songs, but here we do more folk songs and like really chorus choral songs.
And you have more of an expanded repertoire and it's a little more challenging?
Yeah. Yeah.
That's amazing. And so.
Um orchestra was cool. We got to go under a different uh conductor, which is something that I've never done before. And our conductor, he was great. He was very energetic. He worked with us really hard. And it was interesting to be able to look at all the other players.
Amazing. I know your voice, you're so young. Josh, we're gonna skip you, like, obviously you're enthusiastic. We'll we'll take that.
Um it's fun to like meet new people from other places and sing with people that really like really love to sing to.
That's amazing.
Uh the music was a good challenge for what I've usually done. It was interesting to play in like an orchestra.
That's awesome. So I'll open it up to the the committees. Anybody would like anybody, would anyone like to say anything? Meg?
Just first start with congratulations. Would one or two of you just share a little bit, what's the audition process like for that?
Oh, for chorus, the audition par- process is they take you into different sections. The people that are doing soprano go with a group and they split you into three different rooms. And there it's not of like how you sing or anything, they just split you up randomly. And you go in, you sing the song first, then you do intervals, and then you do the scale.
For band, they give you two pieces. It depends on the instrument, 'cause every instrument has very varying amounts of composition. Like, there's a lot of groups that try it, but not many French horns.
Mm-hmm.
Uh so uh you play your two pieces. They give you a sight reading piece, uh and I believe they did that for chorus as well, too.
Yeah.
Um but you play that, you they give you two random scales, so you have to learn all of them because you don't know which one you're gonna get. And then that's pretty much it.
So you get the music in advance?
Yes.
Oh, that's excellent. And just from my perspective, having attended the sixth and seventh grade band concert, it doesn't seem simplistic at all, so I appreciate that the level you're at is quite advanced if you think that that's very simple. So congratulations.
Thank you.
He won't say it, but I will. Uh Josh is also in the Claflin Hill Youth Orchestra.
I will.
I was just gonna ask that question. Are there, is is Josh the only one that's also in that?
Well, I went to their.
No.
Maddie is.
I tried out, but I didn't get it.
You weren't, okay. So, and.
Nonetheless, trying out, still pretty impressive.
And I went to their concert in uh was it?
April.
April. And they did classic orchestral repertoire with the with with the adults. They did Beethoven, they did Les Biches.
We did.
Yeah, like Shostakovich.
Yeah. The most recent concert, we did full Beethoven, Smith, all four movements, and with the full orchestra and um full unfinished symphony.
That's good. That's amazing. And so does Paul conduct those himself?
It really was. Yep, yep.
Yeah, that's great. Would anyone else like to say anything? Laura?
Just listen, congratulations. Um your hard work really paid off, so thank you and thank you for representing Milford.
Chris?
Congratulations, Jason. After you were selected uh to the various groups, what type of per- how many performances did you have and what type of performances were there?
For the chorus, we only had one performance. And that was pretty.
Okay. And who's the audience for that performance?
Um parents, anyone who wants to come and.
Excellent. Excellent.
We have two rehearsals before the concert. So literally, we all come prepared and it's like the first time we actually play together. We have two chances to like get everything done and then we're on the concert.
Yeah, they'll do an entire season of music in two days.
Wow, that's impressive. That's awesome.
Yeah.
Um I, we normally don't.
Arthur?
Uh alright. So there's a participant is back, I think his motion besides you. Can we recognize someone?
It's amazing.
And who is this? Do you remember that?
Would you just introduce yourself and tell us what you play or?
Uh I'm Arthur Gomes. I play the tetter saxophone.
Excellent.
I just, you know, congratulations to you guys. And what what are my questions? Is how long have you guys been doing this? Uh some of your first years, twenty years, you know, how long you guys been doing this stuff?
Twenty year.
I I've been doing, I did the central districts last year and I did it this year.
Two years.
Yeah.
When did you start singing?
Oh, I started.
Which would be my question, I'm sorry.
When have you guys started doing all this?
Oh, fifth grade.
Fifth grade.
Which sort of was like the middle of fifth grade, 'cause I actually started percussion, but I won't talk about that.
Well, congratulations.
I didn't make it past bells.
Okay.
That's amazing. Well, we have a little something for you, so if there's no other um comments from the school committee, then I will hand these out. Well, just a quick question. So how many now, how many octave range do you have vocally? Any guesses, Jay?
Zently?
Huh? Congratulations.
Are you saying Zently? What's her range?
Any of, yeah. Any, uh all the singers?
Oh. I have no idea.
No? Did you guys ever test any of them?
I'm sure the chorus teacher has.
Yeah. That'd be interesting.
I heard you rehearsing um Freddie Mercury yesterday. So it it a a good, very good range. That's all I can say.
Presenting this one.
Oh, yeah.
That's amazing. Thank you again for everything.
Absolutely.
Congratulations. Thank you. Craig, presenting. I think Craig's good. Thank you, everybody.
Craig, can you get a picture? It's sliding together a little bit, okay? It's getting blocked.
Well, yeah.
Am I joking? I'm probably the most talented one here.
I saw him earlier. I was trying to uh teach you violin.
That was a lost cause.
Congratulations, Jason.
Thank you guys so much. Thank you, Jason. Those again for all your hard work as well.
Thank you.
So we're gonna recognize Stacy Middle School French students and community service initiatives. That'll be right in. Yes, sir. We'll be right back. Um so do I need to?
So Holly's gonna help us with this.
Oh, okay.
So we'll just carry them over. You wanna carry those? You wanna carry the other two?
Sure.
Alright, perfect. Whatever you'd like, boss. And so what's this? So this is. These are certificates. So some of them are for awards for the French band and some is for community service.
So Holly's gonna help.
Holly's gonna manage all the things.
Okay, I just hand these to.
We're just smiling and shaking hands.
Okay, great. Yep, I'll just hand these to Holly.
I love that we're smiling and shaking hands. That works for me. So guys, if you wanna walk all the way in, that's fine. Is it a big rod?
Yeah.
Alright, where's Ms. Davran? Oh, there she is. It's a little like Where's Waldo. Can I step up to the uh the microphone and kind of talk about your like accomplishments of your French students?
Sure. Okay, so um what we have is nine exam takers of the National French Exam. Um in the country, over seventeen thousand students took this exam on vocabulary, grammar, and cultural sensitivity. And we have nine kids that did very well. We've got a gold medalist, a few bronze medalists, and some honorable mentions. I also have with me this evening members of my French club. And they decided to do a community service project for Burkina Faso, Africa, where they speak French. And they raised thirteen hundred dollars at Stacy Middle School. And this was to help the girls uh be able to go to high school. There are no facilities that are clean, sometimes no facilities at all. So the thirteen hundred dollars went to building two cabins where these girls could take care of what they needed to in order to finish out their education.
Amazing.
Thank you. So would you like us to move forward with the awards at this point?
Sure, that would be great, Mr. McIntyre.
Alright, excellent. And parents, if you wanna like step over here and take pictures of the certificates being presented, feel free to do so. Very informal.
Mr. Consigal, if you could take a few pictures, too?
Could I have Josh Anderson, who has an honorable mention for the National French Exam, please come forward? Could I have Natalie Dequenha, please come forward, honorable mention for the National French Exam? A Pragjiniere is absent tonight, but she most certainly wasn't mentioned honorab for our National French Exam. Could I have Naomi Tassuda, please come forward, honorable mention? And we have our first bronze medalist, Joseph Copeland, for the National French Exam. Could I have Jai-Lee Madden, who also earned a bronze medal in the National French Exam? Elisa Sayed, also a bronze medalist for the National French Exam. And Riley Walsh, bronze medalist for the National French Exam. And we have Yasmin Salerno, gold medalist with only two wrong on the National French Exam. And then we have uh members of the French club that showed a lot of leadership in our effort to raise money for Burkina Faso. Josh Anderson. And Natalie Dequenha. And Madison Pugh, please come forward. Yasmin Salerno. It was Yasmin's idea for to raise the money for this particular effort. Naomi Tassuda. Ruppalardi. Riley Walsh. And the president of our French club, Sutton Webb.
How did you uh speak anymore?
Oh, that's okay.
Would any of the kids like to say anything?
Um would any of the French kids like to say anything?
Who, I'm sorry, it's Sutton did, it's your club, right?
Oh, I'm good.
Would, could you take two seconds and just tell us a little bit about what it means to you?
Um I think that it was st- I.
No, she can come up or stand there, it's okay.
Um everybody put in a lot of work and many of us didn't have to, but we all took it upon ourselves to realize it was an important cause. And we all decided to do our part and work together, which is very, very important, so good job.
That's amazing. Very impressive. Awesome. So I'm gonna open it up to the committee. Um does anybody like to say a few words?
Just congratulations. Um th- this is one of the perks of being a school committee member to see this and and really truly understand what you guys go through and do, just to like achieve and it and just do things that normal people, normal kids wouldn't do. Um and and to raise money for a great cause, I think that's 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 extraordinary. And I, kudos to all you. I mean, you guys have done very well for yourselves and congratulations to all of you. Well done.
Yeah, amazing.
I just have two questions whoever wants to answer. Um on the fundraiser, I read the heartfelt thank you letter that you received. I was curious, was there any communication with um the school or um the individuals or maybe will there be?
No, we we actually did this as a surprise.
Wow.
Which I thought was um, you know, made a big impression on them. Um but they have asked Yasmin Salerno uh to be an ambassador for their organization and she has accepted. So I think we're going to see a lasting relationship between students.
Excellent. And then on the exam, this is the second year, Ms. Davran, that you've brought students who have achieved this highly, so congratulations first to you.
Thank you.
And to all the students, what did the studying entail? How much was involved to achieve this level of mastery on uh such a national exam?
Bruce Yasmin from the. Yasmin, can you can you take this one?
Um yeah, so um this is going to sound really bad, but I took the practice test and I got forty-three out of forty-five. And then that was my practice and then I took the actual test and then I guess I got the same score. Um but um I'm also bilingual, so that really helps 'cause you have the cognates. And I just have a really good memory, too.
Excellent. Okay, congratulations. Someone else who maybe. That seems like the exception.
I guess, I gue- I guess next to the preparation happens in French class.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I was gonna say, it's so challenging perhaps in class, but it's students are well-prepared.
Absolutely. They, and I think I told you this last year, um they don't do two chapters of our curriculum and they have to sit for this exam. So they have to use a lot of prior knowledge, um adjective agreement and verb conjugation.
It's great.
So it really is a testament to them to be able to sit for an exam that they're not completely prepared for. Uh we have not gone through, you know, chapter seven and eight, and they did incredibly. They did incredibly.
Is taking the test optional, Ms. Davran?
Um it is optional.
Well, congratulations even further for you guys for going and being on the.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amazing. Chris?
Congratulations, everybody. How did you connect with the school itself? How, you know, from Milford to the this particular school?
Um so Barco, where we um raised the thirteen hundred dollars, um we had to look on the internet and we had to do a lot of research to make sure that the organization was going to be a good one. Sometimes you you send money someplace and you don't know what hands it's going to get into. And so we did a lot of research and we made sure this is a solid organization. They're gonna do what they say they're gonna do. And you saw the thank you note. Um and they sent us pictures of the cabins they are building. And so we felt really good about this particular organization.
And you feel like this is an organization we'll continue to relationship with, with possibly some more back and forth uh kind of communications and and fundraising efforts?
Um. A- absolutely, absolutely. The thing of it is, is I let the French club decide who they want to do a project for. Last year, they decided to uh do it for Haiti. And we brought clean, fresh water to Haiti. Um and this year, they decided, let's do Africa. They speak a lot of French in Africa, so it was Burkina Faso. So I think we will definitely maintain our relationship. But if the French kids want to raise money for another French-speaking part of the world, that's okay with me, too, because they sort of drive, you know, what's going on.
Okay, good. Congratulations, everyone.
Thank you.
Laura?
So I just wanna say congratulations as well. Um thank you um to the students and for working so hard and for working together um for the fundraiser and also for the French exam. We're really proud of you and um congratulations.
Thank you.
That's awesome. That it. So can I get another round of applause for everybody? Thank you so much, Holly.
Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you for coming.
Very good.
Congratulations.
You guys are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting.
So we're gonna move on to the S E L climate update. Hi, Lisa.
Thank you so much for having me tonight. And I just wanna thank you before I start, just for supporting the position of director. Um it was really, it's been a great opportunity for us as a district to really look at um proactively what our skills, our student skills are here as well as reactively in looking at what programs we need to help our students um along. And I also wanna thank Anita and Monte, who is our social worker. It was our uh first time this year, pre-K through five. Um and unfortunately, she would have been here tonight, but she had her baby three weeks early, so um congratulations to Anita. But it it has been great working with Anita and with her help, along with um the collaboration you'll see with our um principals and our teachers. We were able to do some great work this year. Um so just to start off, looking at a an update on students. So we did a second step is our um social skills program that we had adopted two years ago in our district. So um one of my main focus was to really look at, looking at the consistency of the program. What are we doing in our schools and how are we working collaboratively to teach these skills? What is the language? So I spent a lot of time um going into the buildings this year, teaching second step, all the way from some lessons at the preschool, um at kindergarten, um Woodland and Stacy. Um so as we know, um what our employees are looking for in our um students that are graduating, then along with the academic knowledge, they're looking for teamwork, problem solving, and the ability to plan and prioritize. And as you'll see as we go on in later in the presentation, this is the first time district-wide. On Monday, we brought twenty teachers together to really look at what is the language we're we're using in our schools and what are the skills we really wanna hone in on at the younger levels. So by the time they're at the middle in the high school, we have the the coping skills, the problem solving, the conflict resolution. So we'll see that later on. Um some of the other things we did, we did some district-wide programming with the Start With Hello Week and Say Something Week from the Sandy Hook Promise. So we're loo- really looking at um, you know, including everyone, um really the difference between for the younger kids, tattling and reporting. For the older kids, it's really being responsible reporters and making a difference in their community. I do wanna give a shout out to the Stacy Middle School students, a student awareness wellness t- a wellness awareness team, I'm sorry. Um so this year, under the direction of um the health teacher, Celeste Sally, she actually brought the Shine Initiative, which is a mental health component from District Attorney Early's office into the health classes. And from there, a group of students were really interested in continuing this um awareness. So um they did write to um Mrs. Angelini asking to start this group. And under the direction of Celeste Sally, their health teacher started a wellness awareness group. So we are um looking forward to next year. Celeste and I have been talking about some things that the students will be doing. Um right now, they're working on a project to collect, to raise money to for Buddy Bench, for one of their students that passed away this year. So they're pretty um vibrant and they were already talking about when they come up to the high school, bringing that along with them. Um some collaboration, as we know, it's it's always good for our elementary and middle school students to see our high school students. So some things that we did this year, we had some of our former EL students um from the high school go down to both Woodland Elementary School and Stacy Middle School and talk to the newcomer students about their experiences coming here from a different country. What some of the the challenges were, how their country's education was so different from the current education and how to really take advantage of it. And our EL students. And our EL students loved that opportunity and were looking to do that moving forward. Um, we also partnered with Jeremy Foster and his video production and I think every time I walked in there, he looked at me and he's like, another project for me, the kids were phenomenal. Um, and we were able to, um, get some, um, footage for our younger students, if we were talking about bullying or the importance of learning from our mistakes, our high school students were able to shoot that for us. And we used that in our presentations, our second step presentations at Stacy and at the younger grades. Um, very exciting this year, Mrs. Maribel, who's our Portuguese, um, teacher here at the high school, we actually partnered together with her For- Portuguese four students and one day a cycle, the students went down to Brookside Memorial and worked in our bilingual classrooms there, so they were actually running academic centers with the teachers. Um, and what Ms. Maribel did was she had the students reflect and journal about their experiences in the classroom in Portuguese, so, um, I'm waiting for their final, uh, project, I asked them to write that in English so I could share it with our community. Um, just to, just to show what great partnerships we had. Along with that, um, Pam Hennessy, who is our child development teacher, she's for years been sending students to elementary schools and what we try to do this year is really hone on, um, teachers who are looking for students in their room and what we could really make, um, the project for the students come alive and get their experience, so that has been wonderful as well. And finally, um, Mr. Busha- um, Bushere and Nadine Palmeray helped us with our student athletes and our musicians. This year what we did was we looked at our PBIS, which is our Positive Intervention Behavior System at both Memorial and Brookside, and from the feedback they received from teachers, we needed to kind of overhaul it a little bit. So they kicked it off in January and we had the HAWK come down with our musicians and the students really pumped up the positive behaviors and working as a team. So we're looking forward as we, as we go into our next year, really trying to get our MHS students, um, the opportunity to be those role models for our younger students and really show them what they can be like when they come up to Milford High School. Community partnerships, um, we had a partnership last year with Community Impact, so our, um, outside therapists were coming in to see some of our students who necessarily would not be able to get that outside therapy. Um, this year we partnered with Wayside Community Counseling Center and Trauma and we able to service ninety-six students, um, during the school day who would not have received the therapy they needed because of the six-month waiting list that we're finding. Um, we're gonna continue that partnership next year as well. We did meet with Riverside Emergency Services, Edward M. Kennedy Center, DMH, we actually, thanks to, um, Principal Kernan, had the opportunity to have an art mentor go into Woodland Elementary School and do some artwork with our students. Um, it was a pretty great experience and we're looking to continue that next year and actually bring that up to the middle school as well. Um, and for this summer, we have Carrie Deister, who is a yoga therapist instructor, who will be working with, um, some of our summer school students and she's looking to see how we can use that as another form of, um, self-regulation for our kids, um, all of our kids come the fall. Um, again, thanks to Jen Cutler, who is now the, she was our adjustment counselor here, now the Director of Social Emotional Learning in Ashland. She pulled together a district SEL coordinator group, so we meet once a month, um, from all around the state and we talk about what's going on in their districts, how we can collaborate more and we share ideas, so that's been really great for us to do, um, our district-wide social worker internship program. So we've always had social workers as adjustment counselors, um, and this year Anita Monte, who is our social worker, really this was her big project, was connecting us with schools. So that way, um, we could have a great intensive program, so starting actually this summer into the fall, we will have interns from Boston College, Salem State, Assumption and William and James, working in our counseling department, both at, um, Stacy Middle School and the high school, and we have one bilingual counselor who'll be with us too, so we're pretty excited, um, with that. Also, um, we partnered with the Family Network, so working with Sarah Hummiston, I was able to, um, do some presentations for our families because we know social emotional learning is not in isolation. So we look at teachers, we look at students and family and, and community partnerships, so just working with some of our families there, helping them learn ways that they can, um, help their child with their social emotional development and prepare them for school. Um, this year Lenny and I partnered and we, this is the first time we had training for our camp counselors, so, um, we were training them on mental health issues and how as a camp counselor they can respond positively to their campers that they'll have this year. Um, couple other things, we did, um, the Nob Scott Reading Council, we talked about using literature to teach SEL skills to teachers and, um, we do have our SEL website up and running and needs to, um, be worked on a little bit more, so we'll do that this summer. We will have brochures for families come the fall in Portuguese, Spanish, we're hoping Arabic, and of course, English, with just some resources in the area for them. Um, and we've been partnering with, um, Mr. Consigli and the Hawke University and getting more information out to families. So this is sort of what we've been doing with students and community. Um, in terms of teachers, as you know, um, we ask the social emotional awareness for teachers is so important as well as it is for students. Um, and what we're finding overall, not just here at Stacy, at, um, oh my goodness, at Milford Public Schools, um, what we're finding is that teachers are stressed. And in one of the studies, we found that ninety-three percent of elementary school teachers reported experiencing high levels of stress. And when we look at that and the research is showing us, what is this stress really coming from? And our students' social emotional needs right now are extremely high, if you think about it, one in six kids between the ages of two and seven are diagnosed with a mental health di- and they have a mental health diagnosis, which is really large. And in our Metro West area, one out of three students is reporting being very stressed within a, a period of a month. So there are a lot of needs and when you look at where teacher stress is coming from, we have a lot of students who have these academic needs coming in, but they're also, uh, coming from trauma backgrounds. And we have also forty-one percent of teachers leaving the procession, the profession within five years of starting and teacher attrition has been high. So this is overall what's happening, not just, you know, here in Milford, are we seeing this, we are, when we talk to our staff, we, um, actually sent out our SEL committee, we looked at, you know, what are three words that you would describe, um, your day with, how do you end your day, and we're hearing things like tired, exhausted. Um, and that's because teachers really care, when teachers get into this profession, it's, they really, really care about the students. And so what we're really trying to do is listen to the teachers' voices and really put an emphasis on having them be a part of some decision-making that's happening, but also make them aware of their own wellness needs, right? So, uh, all of us, we can get so caught up in what we do every day, that sometimes we need to take a moment and really take care of ourselves and make that the forefront. So, um, some of the things that we do here in Milford, um, we do have the Culture and Morale Committee that meets, um, we have our CTLs who have a voice here, we have our mentors, so, um, Assistant Superintendent, um, Consigli actually did a great job with our mentor programs, we have a mentor program for, for second and third-year teachers. And what we did with, this year was talk about some, um, SEL things during the mentor meeting. Um, we have the Stacy Principal Advisory Committee, we have s- school councils, our Sunshine Committee really working on the self-awareness, um, and just having fun. Sometimes we forget, you know, in our professions, to just have fun and talk about other things besides school. Um, and we have our preschool monthly meetings with VAs and TAs, so these are just some of the, the ways that teachers do have voices here. Um, so what did we do this year, taking into consideration the emotional wellness of teachers? Um, again, we had our, we talked about SEL in our first-year mentor program. Um, this year partnering with Judy Dogmies, our, our nurse director and nurses, um, Lisa Caruso, who's our high school nurse, and also Lisa White. We really heard, you know, the voices of the teachers and we thought, why not have a staff wellness week? We have a kids' healthy awareness week, our PTOs are great in doing teacher appreciation week, but what can we do for staff? So in March, we, um, had this one week where daily, we sent out emails to everyone in the district about some sort of wellness. Um, and we also had drawings each day focused on wellness, so we, you know, thanks to the Cycle Bar who gave us a month free membership and weekly, um, classes. We also had Five Star Nutrition who donated, um, Carla Oliva did a, um, cooking class for ten of our winners. And Community Use also provided some, um, stuff for us, so we were able to do some great, um, stuff with our staff. We also here, Lisa Caruso, provided a, sort of like a meditation calm room for our staff, so, um, you'd be surprised, the staff members who during their prep would go into, um, a room that had some soft music playing and, um, chair massages happening. Um, so we really wanted to, um, highlight it's important as a teacher to take those five minutes and really take care of yourself. Um, we also did some after-school de-stress sessions, we started that in December. So Lisa Caruso, Lisa White and I went to the different schools, sometimes we had ten teachers, sometimes we had five, sometimes we had one, and really the focus was on doing some mindfulness. And so from our fifteen-minute sessions, sometimes ended up as an hour and colleagues who didn't know each other started sharing some things that they do on their spare time and to really take care of themselves. So we're looking next year to really continue, um, the wellness piece for our teachers and we have some ideas of what we'd like to offer after school for them. And we will continue with the staff wellness week, we're hoping to make it a little bigger next year. Um, we had our RIBBIS training, so we had the Train The Trainer SEL program, so this year, um, I was able to take one teacher from each of the buildings, Nicole Leland, Dee Rizio, Donna Williams, Christina Cote, Lydia Buckley and Trish Radelphi, um, with me to this program and we did it with our area schools, so Hope Dale, Millis, Melbury. And we learnt out about ways that we can really, um, so SEL is not just a program, but it's something that we should be doing that's embedded in the culture of our schools and in our classrooms. So we spent the time really working on that and from that committee, we were able to get our first, um, district-wide second step PD day. So it was great to have teachers in here who were, um, you know, voicing their concern, but also ways that we can look at making this language across our schools, um, the same and also what are the skills that we wanna be teaching our preschoolers all the way up. So the next step will be, we'll be meeting with principals to roll that out for the year, so we have a team that's really, really excited, um, and energetic about that. Um, the other thing that was a great, was great this year, um, our Memorial School Crisis Response Protocol. So, um, a concern came up from teachers looking for more direction on how to handle a crisis in the classroom. So working together with, um, Lisa Burns and Rachel Driscoll, along with, um, our union reps and some of our teachers, I was able to sit on that committee and for a couple of months, we really worked out what are the tools that the teachers need, and I think that's so important when we're looking at, you know, our staff at SEL, what are the tools they need and how can we help them? So that was a great experience. And finally, um, just some feedback that I get from the staff was needing more, um, education around the mental health issues. So we are offering, um, mental health first aid training, um, one of our parents who is a, um, a trainer and she's actually a, a just school adjustment counselor as well, so we're offering this June nineteenth and June twenty-sixth to our staff and we had thirty staff members sign up and there were additional staff members interested, but it just didn't work out. So we're gonna hopefully do that throughout the year to give them those tools. There's a lot of interest in trauma training, so this year, um, we did train our support staff and our nurses and we're looking throughout the year to offer various PDs to train our entire staff. So, um, definitely listening to the, the teachers' voices and what we can do as we move forward to take their needs into consideration too. Sorry, I spoke a lot.
Amazing, thank you so much, Lisa.
Thank you.
That's awesome, so, um, really great stuff, so I'll open it up to the committee, um, for anybody that would like to, okay?
Please, when you're talking about forty percent of the new teachers, is that, is that just an over? Is that like a statewide?
No, that's, that's national, forty percent of teachers.
National, do we have any type of sense on what it is for the new teachers?
You know, our, our D N R is actually a lot better than the, the national averages, I, I don't have a real, but I can get a.
Yes.
Yeah, it's kinda, I guess it would be curi- I'd be curious myself, just to know, are, you know, I would hope that we're doing better, but how much better?
Yes. Right, we can get that, we can.
You know, and, you know, s- and speaking to that, I guess, yeah, you, you have, you have these wellness days and things like that and, and to see, is it truly, is it working, right?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I'm assume, you can, we can all assume it does, um, but yeah, is it, is it bringing those numbers down too?
Right. Mm-hmm.
So do we look at it at the beginning or, you know, kind of the high-stress part, points of the year and get any feedback, did this, did this help? Or, you know, what changes can be made throughout, you know, to, to make, to improve our program and bring down that stress level, 'cause cer- certainly we want, wanna do that.
Absolutely.
And I was just wondering the, and it sounds like, yeah, so you're, you're using videos for, for social, for social skills modeling, it sounds like too?
Mm-hmm.
So are the high school kids being a part of that, kinda, uh, development of those videos and then using it down at the elementary level?
So what, right.
So it's kinda like, our, our older students are helping our younger students?
Absolutely, so I will go in and just say, here's our topic, um, our topic was, you know, why are mistakes important and what can we learn from our mistakes?
Yeah.
And so I just kinda give that to, um, Jeremy and his students then create it from there, um, with our inclusion in Start With Hello, it was just sort of, here's an idea, you can run with it. And so then we consult to see if this is what, you know, we were looking for.
Yep.
Um, so it, that's been really great, I would love to be able to bring some of our students at the high school down when we teach these, um, lessons to the students, 'cause I think it's so important for them to see the modeling.
Right, great.
Thank you very much, anyone else?
I think this.
Laura?
Thank you, Lisa, there's a lot of information, very helpful, um, we've been able to accomplish this past year. What do you think are some of your bigger goals for next year, I know you've outlined a lot of projects that you were able to accomplish this past year, um.
Sure. So, um, definitely next year, continuing with our second step program, um, to keep the consistency of the language ressorta and the skills.
Okay.
So we're hoping that, um, we see more, when, we, when we look at the data in terms of, you know, discipline and attendance, we're hoping with all these skills in place, some of our data will go down. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Um, this is the first year too that I've asked our adjustment counselors to turn in before the end of this year, just their numbers on the students that they're seeing and to break it down by, um, sort of why they're seeing them, is it anxiety? Yeah. Mm-hmm. Um, so they're gonna be doing that, as well as looking at, um, you know, how many emergency service calls we've made, so we're hoping that with all these skills in place, we're gonna start seeing a decrease. Um, and that, the other big thing that we've been talking a lot about is, you know, our EL population, so our students are coming in, um, as we know that we have eight hundred EL students in our district now and our students are coming in and their educational, um, experiences in other countries is so different, so. Mm-hmm. What, how can we, um, sort of provide some help for them as they're coming in? So we're looking with our EL director, Jen Norjanian, and our EL teachers, what kind of course can we give the students? Um, so that they, that way they learn more about, um, what it's like here to be, um, in the United States and in America and the American school systems and what tools do they need? So that's one of the projects.
Okay.
We're gonna look at this year too, is that population and how we can move forward with that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So can I answer your question, Chris, I just looked up the data.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Um, so th- i- it's tricky, 'cause I c- I can't disaggregate it just qu- quickly by like retirements, but the last three years, our teacher retention rates are eighty-eight point three, ninety-one, ninety-one point eight. So a chunk of that is retirements too.
Sure, yeah, and I guess, yeah, and part of the numbers too, which is forty percent of new teachers feeling, um, just kinda overwhelmed, so that's kind of that number too.
Yeah, we can, we, we can look at that, that's a little trickier, yeah, but that gives you a sense, so our numbers are pretty good, you know, for overall.
Look at that, yeah, right. But, right, you just, yep.
I'd say very good, actually.
Yep.
Anybody?
Right. So first, I just wanted to commend you, Lisa, I think to say you've hit the ground running is probably an understatement when I look at what's accomplished in a year, so, um, I think next year will be really exciting too. Um, you've shared with me, incidentally, I guess, some comments that students have made, which have just been so powerful in terms of what the work has accomplished.
Um, so I commend you on like the ideas of the brochures and the website, because I think the more we can connect that with families, like some of those percentages you're sharing surprise me and I wonder if parents would be surprised to hear that as well.
And so I wonder, the more we can share like your terminology and your tips and suggestions, because we do as much as we can in the course of the day that we have the students, but then we have all these hours at home and if we could be more, um, involved or helpful, I think that will be powerful as well.
What we're looking to do with that second step is really have a month where there's a theme, so that way what will happen is we'll send our information to the principals to put in their monthly newsletters and some tips that they can be working on, so, um, you know, I had shared with, with Megan that one of, a parent had called me and said, I don't know what you're doing in the schools, but my son came home and he was, you know, usually when he's angry, like there's, like it's a tornado in my house and she's like, and he came home and he said, Mom, I need some space, he went upstairs to his room, he came down and came downstairs and said, okay, I'm calm, I was angry, I used my strategy, I counted to ten and now I can talk to you. So just things like that, so if parents have students, either children coming home saying, I'm counting to ten, um, it's great to have the parent support. Um, and really what we've been pushing with our younger students is problem solving, um, so that way by the time they get to high school and middle school, they are problem solvers and making good decisions. Um, so a lot of times, you know, we're using the language like three and me, you know, we want you to solve the prob- try three times to solve the problem and then come to me. So, um, we will definitely send that out, we had talked about that too in our training, how can we make families more involved? So just sending that out monthly, so families know like the terminology and they can use it at home will be great.
That's great, on the Wayside number you provided, those ninety-six students, is that ongoing, it's not that they met with them once?
No, so that's ongoing, therapy that they have, we have a lot of students that are seeing after-school hours, but these are the students that, um, really needed to get therapy for a variety of reasons, so.
Great, oh wow. That's incredible, that's wonderful.
And they're gonna continue this summer as well, too.
Excellent, I know the topic was labeled SEL climate update, could you maybe speak to how you assess climate? I mean, it's sound, I know how engaged you are, is there anything you do that's either more anonymous or ways to sort of garner that information?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it sound, I know how engaged you are. Is there anything you do that's either more anonymous or ways to sort of garner that information?
So um we did have a survey that we had sent out to staff. And I think just some um, you know, interaction with um staff and principals and getting the feel. Um you know, staff members have been great about like, you know, wait a minute, like as I walk through the hallway, I just wanna share something with you. I'd like to get your feedback on something. Same thing with principals, sitting down with them and working collaboratively with them, um just to kinda assess things that are going on. So I don't, I, we did have a survey that went out recently, um so with ME CIA, I believe, correct?
M C I A.
Thank you. I'm not good with acronyms. Um and so I'm sure that will drive us a little more too. Um we did a survey last year with Panorama and because of our new partnership,
Oh, okay, great.
we kind of um put that on the wayside, um and continued with the survey, so.
Great, thank you.
More detail.
Thanks.
Uh going off of the community partnership and they were talking with the ninety-six students. Uh like, is there a particular grade level or is it across K through twelve that we're s- that you're seeing this ninety-six students?
It's it's K through twel- I know, we just got our Metro West Health Survey back, so we really haven't been able to digest it.
Yeah.
But we'll we'll be able to bring that to you. And I'll have a breakdown for you at the time, so you can kinda see.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Um but it's really K through twelve, um that our counselors are coming in.
In that community partnership, does it, is it students working with, I guess, like an outside social worker? And the reason why I ask that is obviously we we look at adding social workers, you know, um and it seems like, you know,
Mm-hmm.
it's going to be an ask almost every year budget wise.
Right.
So are we utilizing, I guess, outside resources, social workers wise, to kinda compensate right now for the lack of social workers that we have within the schools?
Right. So our students who are seeing them are still seeing our adjustment counselors. So our adjustment counselors are doing like the crisis management, trying to get the students through the day. Are those ninety-six um students that are being seen are more long-term therapy that our our staff members are unable to do um during a school day? So um those students are being seen, but they're still on a crisis basis being seen. Um our social workers have been doing a lot of the contact, the the case management with families and connecting them with resources. Um we will get calls. Um Anita had over six hundred um contacts with families this year. Um and it's anything from, um you know, my, you you know, my child needs some outside therapy or we're looking for programming this summer, um or, you know, we need a mentor for our student as well as, you know, we have some families who unfortunately, um parents are losing jobs and they become homeless and need some support. So we really run the gamut there too. So those are, in addition to, those are our students who really need that outside therapy that probably will wait for six months to get them.
Yes. Yeah, the ninety-six were more intensive in a sense, but you have six hundred others that have needed some sort of service
Yes. Right.
along the way from September first to to June fourteen.
Absolutely. Right. So we, our our counselor caseloads, I can tell you range anywhere from like a hundred um to our, like a hundred each of our counselors here at the high school um to like eighty at our elementary schools.
And how many counselors at each school?
So we have um, we have ten counselors in j- in total. We have three adjustment counselors here. We have um two at Stacy Middle School, one was added this year. Um we have three at Woodland and then we have one at Brookside and Memorial.
And each one has up to a hundred cases.
Mm-hmm. And so sometimes, you know, that's, it's it's amazing, like they're trying to see all those students. And at the same time, if a student is in crisis, trying to do that as well, as well as do the um, you know, the educational piece. So we're trying to be proactive as well and get our counselors out there, so we're we're managing a lot.
Definitely. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lisa, two quick things. One, um and forgive me, but if uh if we could see more of a regular update, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Maybe monthly or every other month or something to that effect, if you could come in and just give us an update on what's going on. And two, um when you come back, could you throw some metrics around what you are seeing and what you are feeling as we build a case to add additional resources to help fill gaps?
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Thank you so much, Lisa. It's always a pleasure.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Woodland Elementary School and Stacy Middle School, please come forward.
I think maybe Woodland first and then Deshays.
Oh, okay, whatever. Whatever he says.
Yeah. The K twos are more of a team approach.
This is really just a puppet regime.
All right.
I'm the puppet.
Hi, everyone.
Hey, everyone.
Good evening.
Hi, Tim.
Thanks for having me tonight. So it, while I have the uh the mic, if I, if if you would indulge me with a few um just recognitions and some highlights I wanted to share before I get into the other reasons that I I was here. So first, I wanna recognize um Al Spitler and Mike Anantonio, um who were on my school council for the last three years. Um Al was our co-chair this past year and he couldn't be with us tonight, but um I wanna recognize that they're three years of service on our school council. Um I also, speaking of three years, I wanna recognize our grade five class, our first true three-year class at at the new Woodland School.
Mm-hmm.
Um so this'll, this'll be um a kind of a bittersweet moment as they as they leave me.
That's crazy.
It's a good one.
I've seen them, you know, I've seen them for their full Woodland careers, um so that'll be nice to see. Um I wanna recognize Caroline Demio, who is our our lone retiree at Woodland. Um she's a reading specialist for us. And I've I've known, actually, I've known Caroline since uh for about eighteen years. She was a TA for me when I was a second grade teacher in Hawkinson. And she left Hawkinson to um pursue a a her degree in reading and then landed here in Milford and, you know, things come full circle. So um wonderful teacher, wonderful woman. So I wanna recognize Caroline. Um I wanna also recognize our community service club, um which is uh led by Jen Alger, one of our fifth grade teachers, um who has done some tremendous uh community service work with our students, um whether it's doing food drives or clothing drives. Um one of the things that uh Jen brought in 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 a partnership with the YMCA uh was an in-school food pantry, where we have kids um that are actually taking home um food that was purchased through donations or or fundraising that was done by the YMCA um and purchased all kinds of uh non-perishable foods that uh, so every couple of weeks, kids are going home with bags of food uh for their families, which I think is awesome, cause you know, Jen cleared out her her storage in her classroom. Um and if you know a teacher, you know that they're pack rats. So storage comes at at a premium. Um so to see her clear out her classroom space so that she can have food that we can send home with kids is pretty awesome. Um and last but not least, I wanna recognize our um English language learners, our students and our staff. Uh last uh, was it last week? Week and a half ago, we got our access scores back. And yet again, our Woodland students and staff knocked it out of the park. Um forty percent of our EL students, which is eighty-three students, forty percent of them exited the Eng- um English Language Learner Program. So that were reclassified as um um former English language learners. Um so that's pretty awesome. Um eighty-three percent of our kids were classified as making um adequate progress uh towards our their language goals. So our students and our staff just absolutely crushed it with with EL. You know, again, th- last year, I think it was forty percent, this year it's forty percent again. So that's pretty, pretty amazing. So just a few recognitions. Um so where would you like me to start? Um school improvement plan or?
Sure, it's whatever you feel.
Sure, okay. So I'll start with the school improvement plan, um just to give an update on our goals from last year, which is included at the end, um is the appendix. Um so we had three goals last year or this current school year that we've been working on. Our first goal was um to make a recommendation on um adding a health program at Woodland School, um which we did complete. Unfortunately, that is not something that wa- made it through the budget cycle. Um uh you know, and following, I think, following Lisa, um I'm gonna ask for it again next year. So it's gonna keep coming back and I'm gonna keep pushing it. Uh we we need health education at Woodland School. Um currently, health education doesn't start until sixth grade, um which I think is, we've we've missed a lot of years to um educate students on healthy habits of mind, body, and and soul. Um so uh the sooner we can start he- health education, the better. So um I'm gonna propose it again, so just as a heads up, it's coming back. Um second, one of our goals was to look at um assess our assessment practices and developing common assessment practices. Not only just um which common assessments that we're using and our s- our our schedule of assessing, but how are we gonna use that information? We did not complete that goal. Um I would qualify it as partially met. However, I was really, really excited about the work that we completed this year. So I think I was maybe a little ambitious in in charting out this goal for the year. Um it's something that um we invested a lot of time in over the course of the year. We had some really, really positive meetings and discussions as staff, um identifying which common assessments we we really liked and that we used. Uh developing some new assessments that filled some gaps that we were missing, identifying a schedule. Um and then starting to have those talks about, well, how are we gonna use this data? When are we gonna talk about it? When are we, how is it gonna inform our instruction? That's the piece we didn't quite finish. But like I said, I was really excited about what we did accomplish this year. So that second piece is is gonna be one of our goals i- in this next um next school year is, all right, now that we've got, you know, we've got our assessment practices identified, we've got our schedule identified, what are the conversations gonna sound like? When are we gonna have them around that 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 data so that we can inform instruction um as as a team? Um and then our third goal um was identifying uh grade level guides for families and staff. Um and that was something that we we completed. And that was also a really, really positive uh goal for us. Uh teams of teachers uh work together to identify, you know, what are some power standards um that we want each kid to leave with at at Woodland School for each grade level? So um just choosing grade three. And grade three, what does a grade three student look like at Woodland as a reader, as a writer, as a mathematician? Uh what does it look like for their physical development? How are they um uh in art and music and PE? You know, kind of drawing a picture of this is what a typical third grader should be at Woodland School. This is what we expect are as as an outcome um at the end of the year. Same thing going for fourth and fifth grade. Um also recognizing though that kids develop at different rates and they change over time and they have some ups and downs, there's differences. But typically, you know, these are some common expectations and outcomes for kids at each grade level. Really great discussions. It is, we have grade levels of, you know, fifteen home rooms. And we've got, you know, EL teachers and art teachers and music teachers, everyone, we've got such a large staff. You know, having those common outcomes and having those common discussions around what we want for our kids was really, really positive. And teachers felt really good about that, you know, sitting down together and talking about, well, in my classroom, this is what I expect of kids. When they're working, this is what it looks like. Well, in my classroom, it looks like this. And, you know, talking about, well, where do we find some common grounds so that the Woodland experience is more consistent for everybody? Um and I'm looking forward to to distributing those to families next year. They'll be on our website. Uh there'll be something that's available in the in in our main office, but handing it out on um, you know, our open house nights, handing it out again at for parent-teacher conferences, so that families also know, you know, there's clear communication about what we expect of third graders, fourth graders, fifth graders. Um and again, all of those are also translated for for all of our families as well. So that's an update on on the goals that for for this year. Um you want me to pause here and take questions or anything?
Yeah, um.
Yeah, why don't we?
Yeah, why don't we? Why don't we open it up to the committee for any questions on the goals? Right?
I just had one, Tim.
Sure.
Could you maybe just explain to me, is there overlay between iReady and the Common Assessment work?
Uh there will be.
Okay.
Um as one of the things that, you know, we started iReady at Woodland in the in the fall with wild success. And I I think I came in October or November to talk about that, how excited teachers were about using this tool. Um we subsequently, we we purchased the math s- uh piece of that. We did it with math. Teachers were also excited. Um you know, I think there was some, a lot of momentum that we started at Woodland with that. And Craig, and you know, working with Craig, we uh connected with Brookside Memorial and Stacy to talk about this tool. It was really exciting, but we also wanted to do our due diligence is because there's other tools that are like that.
Sure.
So we looked at STAR three sixty, um you know, comparing those two. So we've been basically piloting both in at Brookside and Memorial, but at Woodland as well, so that we have, you know, we can make an informed decision. Uh so we haven't laid, settled on one. I think we're maybe doing that next week, Craig, is is picking which direction to go in. But yes, that's a long answer to your question of.
Okay. Just, yeah, make sure I understand it.
Yeah, that's, we're, that that will be one of those common assessments that we use to help us
Got it.
and drive instruction and be able to have some um, I think, rich conversations from teacher to teacher about what we're doing.
Sure, and powerful data, for sure, yeah. And then I know it wasn't a goal for this past year, I was just curious.
Yeah.
Is the in attendance sort of work maintaining itself and still yielding results or just curious?
Uh um it's a great question.
Others are stilling that goal, so I was just curious to know.
Yeah, yeah. Um I haven't lost my enthusiasm for it.
Noted.
Um and but what I think has uh, I think we slipped a little bit this year.
Okay, that's great.
Um and ultimately, what happens is is we've kinda run into a problem of, okay, we, you know, we can push the issue and inform parents and we can, you know, make sure that we're in communication with families, but at the end of the day, i- if a family wants to keep their child home, that's a, that's a hard thing to do, is, you know, parents have rights to do that, but also, you know, we have an obligation to have the kids at school. So keeping track of that and then having, you know, what are the consequences when kids are missing school? Um that's a tough one. And I know it's a, that's a discussion that we're gonna have as a as a district um over the summer about having some uniform, you know, practices and policies and, you know, throughout our schools because um it's something that it's, it affects preschoolers straight through high school. I- i- and it's a little bit different, I think, at the high school and middle school where, you know, course attendance and, you know, attendance on a regular basis really affects those grades, which, you know, leads to not being able to take for uh, you know, prerecorded classes and so on and so forth. But at the elementary school, it's a little bit different, so.
Sure, okay.
I would say we slipped a little bit there, but we're still in the ballpark.
Uh of range, yeah. Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah. Yep.
I really um enjoyed reading the parent guides. I thought that was a um really helpful information.
Right.
Um just had a question. How do they correlate to like, say, the report cards? So I know it's like, you know, that you're listing kinda like the skills and how does that correlate?
Um it doesn't yet.
Okay.
Um I'd say, you know, some of the power standards of what we are looking at are are the, you know, as you know, you know, our curriculum, our standards that we have at each grade level.
Mm-hmm.
Looking at, say, grade three math, there's probably forty standards that we have to hit.
Right.
And, you know, forty standards that we're doing over the course of the year. But what are the ones that we, I have identified as the most critical that every kid needs to leave, you know, a grade level with?
Okay.
So identifying those power standards, I think, I think what we did as far as this grade level work or guides work
Mm-hmm. Yep, handbook or guides.
is going to lead to those discussions about the report card, which is our goal for for next year, is ta- taking a look at revising our report card. But um I I'm I'm, I would expect we'll see better correlation between the two.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Tim. Can you?
Okay. All right. So go, moving on to this year, um as far as what our goals are, our first goal is revising our report card. Um and and our rationale for doing that is, right now, Woodland is, uh we're, we have two different report cards. Um when we we brought fifth grade down from Stacy, we kept their their grading system and their their report card model. And we kept our third and fourth grade. So right now, we've got, third and fourth grade is working under a standards-based uh report card. Um and grade five is working under a numerical, uh more traditional system. And not only that, it's, what's interesting is our rating scales for things like behavior and effort and, you know, conduct, they're reversed. So grades one, I'm sorry, grades three and four are working under a one to five scale with five being the highest. And grade five is working on a one to five scale with one being the highest. Um so there's this transition, especially that under that first report card, when fifth grade parents that like, they see all these ones and previously their s- their child was all these fives. And like, what happened? Well, you know, you gotta make that connection. It just doesn't make a lot of sense, but.
A savvy sibling might be able to work in their favor.
Yes, yes. So um you, looking at, I mean, that's one reason. We've got two different report cards for one school. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense and and I think we're overdue to to have one Woodland report card. But in the process of doing that, I think what we've heard from teachers as well as families is that standards-based report card, while it's very much, you know, best practice in education, especially at at the elementary level, you know, some of those standards, i- if you're going through it, it gets a little confusing and it's not real clear. It's not simple. Um and there's a lot of, you know, eduspeak and educator vocabulary terms. So a- and I think at the end of the day, most parents wanna know, is my child doing well? Are are they where they need to be? So maybe simplifying some of what our standards look like. Um you know, and I n- I've heard from a lot of parents, and and again, maybe some of this is due to education. They talk about, you know, I know what an A is. I know what a ninety means. I know what those things mean. Um that would be much simpler for me to understand versus, you know, one, two, three, four, you know, MBs and all this other stuff. So simplifying it so that it's um the ease of communication between family and schools is is a little bit better. We also have, like I said, the fifth grade is using those numerical scores. And again, if your child is scoring a a ninety-eight, you pretty much know that they're doing well. But for that average typical student, two, you know, you could have two kids that both score an eighty. They mean very different things. If you're, if you score an eighty in reading and another kid scores an eighty in reading, they could be two different kinds of readers. So that numerical score doesn't necessarily give the detail that we want to to provide parents as to where are their strengths, where are their we- where are their weaknesses, what can we work on and improve upon? where are their we- where are their weaknesses, what can we work on and improve upon, what should we we be proud of, so having some kind of combination of those. Um, so that's what we're looking to do, is have one report card that kind of hits both of those goals of simplifying things in the communication, while at the same time providing a level of detail that gives an accurate picture of of how a student is doing. Um, so we'll be looking at that over the course of the year. Um, Dr. McIntyre has warned me that maybe this might be an ambitious goal for one year, but I'm gonna go for it, um, so. Um, our second goal is uh looking at our PBIS um practices at Woodland. Um, you know, as as we've uh brought our school together, it's grown from um the old school to the new school, and we've added a new grade, we've got a a a huge number of staff, having that common consistent language around behavior and what our expectations are, how we're going to enforce those uh uh those expectations, how we're gonna hold kids accountable, how we're gonna recognize them for making positive choices, and incentivizing them to make those positive choices. Um, having such a huge staff and a huge student body, it's been a challenge to do. Plus, we've also had, you know, different changes in administration, we've had a lot of staff changes over the course of time from when PBIS was originally brought to Woodland School and to Milford. So with all those changes happening, we need to take a li- another look at what we're doing, so that we have a more consistent and effective um kind of behavior management system as a school. So we're gonna reinvest ourselves in PBIS and and looking at what we're doing um school-wide. And then our third goal, as I mentioned, was uh continuation of that goal from this year. Common assessments, what are we doing with them, how are we using them? I think we've got a pretty good plan as to what we're uh what we're assessing, when we're assessing, uh what tools we're using, but now we wanna talk about, okay, when are we gonna talk about these, this information? How is it going to impact our instruction? How is it gonna change, um, you know, our student groupings, um, in, you know, intervention services, um, enrichment opportunities for kids? What's it gonna look like? Um, so that that's our our final goal, so.
Awesome.
That's our plan for this, for next year.
Great, I'll open it up.
Tim, thank you very much for all your hard work.
Sure.
Um, regards to the report cards, I guess, I just wanna come back to the
Mm-hmm.
to the timeline, can you s- I guess, yeah, speak to that timeline? Um, you know, and how, I guess, how you you'll work on it all through next year, school year, and then kind of roll it out
Yeah.
in a sense, the the following school year?
The way I'm, yeah, the way I've kind of laid it out is that we're gonna spend, um, start some work over the summer, um, and and getting some staff members to to support us and and doing some research and, you know, gathering some, you know, from neighboring communities, looking at some alternatives to wh- to what we're doing, a- and also taking a hard look at, you know, what's working well for us and and not, you know, wanting to recreate the wheel if we don't have to. Um, and then looking at maybe really, you know, that continue, that work continuing through January, and then having some kind of a, you know, in in the January, February range, looking at having some kind of product that we can share as a staff and and vet as a staff, do we, what do we like about this, what do we not like about this, you know, making some changes there, and then bringing in some parents and community members to also, you know, take a look at this. Um, if there's an opportunity for some piloting w- at 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 a certain class or grade level, um, you know, we certainly wanna try that, try that out, and make sure it's something that's practical and and workable, and that families are are getting what we want them to get as far as information goes. Um, and then coming back to you guys in the spring and making some recommendations um as to, you know, what we like, you know, going forward, and hoping it's something that you guys will support um as a change.
Excellent, sounds good, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Tim. Having been at your school council, I know how thoughtful and collaborative you've developed, so I commend you, I think these all seem very valuable and will be great.
Mm-hmm.
It's developed, so I commend you, I think these all seem very valuable and will be great. Um, a comment and a question, I guess, on the report card one, maybe just to encourage the timing to be a little sooner, if there's a funding need, just
Mm-hmm.
to align with the budget, um, just some, if we wanted to do it for the next year.
Yeah. Yeah, the only funding need that I I'm projecting is is, you know, some kind, and and this is something that I would do over the summer, um, having Lisa Byer,
Yep.
who is our our data manager and also our, kind of our liaison to X Two and Aspen, which is our management um system, making sure that this is, you know, if if, you know, some proposed changes that we wanna make, making sure that it's something that they can do.
Okay.
Um, and not having to, like, you know, create something new for us, which would in, you know, incur a cost, so.
Perfect. Excellent, I just won't want it to be delayed potentially for that, so great.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then on the PBS one, would, um, Lisa Kincaid be involved in that in any way?
Yep. Absolutely, absolutely, I mean, we wanna tie in, um, you know, behavior and social emotional learning, I mean, I think you can't separate the two.
Excellent. Okay, great, I was just.
So absolutely, Lisa will be involved.
Excellent, thanks, good luck.
Yeah. Mm-hmm, thank you.
Chris.
Do grades three through five have access through Aspen X Two? Or is it more of just the grade five, because it starts breaking out into more specific, you know, math, like science, player and portal?
You mean, like, parent portal, like, parent, yeah, parent portal, just five?
Just grade five, yeah.
Yeah, just grade five is is still using it, um, and that, you know, there's there's several, not all of our grade five teachers are are using it as actively as some, um, some, especially the, our Stacy old overs
Yes.
um, are used to, um, you know, inputting, uh, you know, quizzes, test scores and things like that, and
Correct.
um, I think previously, and and Nancy, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but I think a a lot of parents in fifth grade used it, maybe at Stacy, fewer and fewer are using the parent portal because it's, it's not new, it's it's, it's not, it's familiar to them.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Got you, thank you.
Yep.
Steve, I think that's my question, I was gonna ask, is it paper or electronic? So it's paper for grades three, four and five?
Yes, yep, yep.
Okay. The report card, okay.
It's paper, paper report cards for grades three, four and five, similar to K through two.
Okay.
Um, they, you, our three and four report cards look almost exactly like K through two.
Okay.
Five looks more like a, you know, it's a traditional report card with just reading and a number, math and a number, um.
Okay. Okay.
So it looks a little bit different.
So they're.
But parents are able to, in grade five, access that online, so they can see over the course of a term how their child is performing.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And if I can just make one comment on this, uh, we've engaged in the report card work before as a district,
Mm-hmm.
and it sounds like a simple task, but it's unbelievably complex. And so I think it's really just, just uh people hours is really gonna be the driving force and and I think things like shared definitions and and compromises between the fifth grade and the third and fourth, and which direction they wanna go as a school are all gonna, I think, tie into how quickly this type of a process can wrap up.
And and when we started talking about it as a staff, you could definitely see, you know, people in their camps, like, I love the numbers and I'm keeping my numbers, and people said, we're standards-based and we're gonna stay standards-based, so, uh, we're gonna d- design two different flags, and, you know, it's, it it was, uh, but I think both parties agree, we can, there's, there's a lot of room for compromise, where we can meet in the middle,
Absolutely.
um, which I I'm excited about because I I think that's got a lot of potential.
Yep. But there's, there's a time factor that, um,
Yep.
I I think it's, one year's possible.
Yep.
Um, but the c- this this could continue on into another school year.
Of course.
So I would set that expectation, because we've been through this work before and it's taken sometimes multiple years to get it done.
Yeah.
Awesome.
As far as, um, you wanted me to talk about school safety?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, some s- school safety updates, um, one of the things that I wanted to mention is that, is that in um May, we ran a a l- a lockdown drill, um, which was very, very positive. Um, we we switched things up rather than doing a, you know, very traditional lockdown drill. Um, one of the things that we did this time was we we s- split our school into two halves, and uh we had our kids and our staff run um both scenarios. Uh, so in one scenario, you know, we gave a s- a situation, um, you know, a a safety situation at one end of the building. And what our staff did was, if you were in that end of the building, you ran a a lockdown drill. But we asked our kids and our staff to do more than active lockdown drill, where they were moving furniture in front of the doors and barricading windows and things like that to simulate being more, a more active lockdown, um, than just the traditional close the door and sit on the floor kind of thing. Um, the other half of the building evacuated, and they were evacuating to places that, you know, were different from necessarily their, the the traditional fire drill evacuation spots that we have. Um, because in a safety situation, you may not go to that spot, you may need to go somewhere else. Um, and then we reversed the two. We had a situation at the other end of the building, so the other half of the building did that active lockdown practice, and the other half did it in evacuation. Um, our our staff feedback, um, one of the things that we did after each um scenario is we gave each classroom about twenty minutes of time to then talk about it. Teachers and kids talk about what they s- what they experienced, what they were thinking, what they could have done um differently, what felt good about those situations. Um, so the kids and the teachers had time to process after each scenario. Uh, i- i- the the feedback from staff was great, um, the feedback from kids was was also great. Um, and one of the things that the kids actually, the, uh, they talked about was this felt really good and it felt safe for us. Can we practice this more often and earlier in the school year? Um, which was really good feedback for us uh to hear. Um, you know, it it's, uh, it's an unfortunate byproduct of the of the age that we live in, that we have to practice these things. Um, and, you know, I, it's happened to me twice before where I've I've had a lockdown drill scheduled, and then there's another school shooting. And it always feels weird to then practice one of these drills because you know that everyone's anxiety is is raised, and they're feeling a little on edge, and you don't wanna put the kids and the staff through that, um, so I postponed them. But unfortunately, you know, you can only postpone them so often because they're happening so often, and it, which is awful to say. Um, so, you know, that was a a recent um safety scenario that we practiced. Um, you know, we're also doing our traditional, you know, fire drills four or five times a year, um, and bus safety drills and things like that, so. Um, it's, it's, safety is something that certainly, um, we try and keep on the forefront of our minds, um, with all the things that we have to go on, uh, that that we have to do during a school day. Um, but we, you know, we're never far away from, okay, what can we do to improve our safety practices, to practice something, to um, you know, run a scenario for kids and staff so that, you know, we keep tho- these things fresh in our minds.
Awesome, thank you, anybody? Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Handbook.
Oh, you have the handbook too?
I'm sorry?
Handbook?
Oh, the hand.
Oh, sorry, I did have the handbook.
Let's try, let's get the brooms on.
Yes.
Right.
Two very quick, uh, we didn't, we really didn't make any major changes to the handbook this year. Um, we had one, which is on, uh, one small change, which is on page twenty-seven, I believe it was. Yeah, classroom invitations, uh, previously, the classroom invitations, um, s- the the the, in the handbook, it stated that you should, um, if you're bringing in inv- invitations to school, either invite only the boys, only the girls, for the whole class. And we feel like that is not appropriate in in these times to, you know, have something that is so gender binary for for our classes, like, in, you know, invite who you want, but in order to make make sure that it's still a, you know, positive classroom community, maybe you could do the invitations away from school. Um, and not have to have that kind of divisive uh situation brought into our classrooms. Um, but not making kids choose either all boys, all girls, that should, really shouldn't matter. Um, and then the other uh small change that we made was in regards to on page thirty-four, items restricted, prohibited from school. Um, you know, we have things like, um, you know, Heelys and toy weapons and video games and tape recorders, but one of the things that we added this year was smartwatches. We've got a growing number of kids that are wearing sn- smartwatches and they're a distraction. Um, so if they're being used in a practical manner just to tell the time, that's fine, but if they're, you know, distracted by texting or using it for other purposes, um, that we reserve the right to ask students to remove their their smartwatch. So that was really the only other change that we made.
Correct.
One quick, based on that quick, your cell phone policy, just, I'm sh- I'm sure I know what it is, but if you could just go over it real quick?
Yeah, uh, we, you know, our students, you know, we have a a growing number um of students that are bringing cell phones to school. Um, I would say, if I had to estimate for myself, um, three years ago, I would say none of our third graders had cell phones. Today, probably more than half of our third graders have cell phones.
Really?
Um, so what we asked the kids to do, and we understand, oh, there's a lot of our kids that are either walking to school or they're going home to, you know, whether it's empty homes or they're, you know, at a friend's house after school. So we know that kids need to communicate with their parents, and parents should have the right to communicate with their kids, you know, outside of school hours. So, but when they get to school, they go in their backpacks and they stay there. Um, you know, the kids should not have their cell phones out during the school day. Um, but certainly, you can see, as soon as they walk out the door, they come out. Um, so we encourage them to keep them in their backpacks until um until they're home or off school grounds as as best we can.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Alright, that's it, so we're gonna need a um, uh, a vote and a motion on the handbook and the improvement plan, so.
A motion for a handbook, good.
Okay, second, um, we'll go Laura, we'll go to the side, there you go, so, all in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Sitting by your cell holder here, you know.
Appreciate it.
Meg has her cohort, you know.
I know.
And Stacy Middle School.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce, um, Andres Belize, he's our student council president. I'd like to thank him for being here this evening. Uh, he's done a really nice job attending meetings and representing students. One of the things we really wanted to focus on this year, based on some data we collected, that students were feeling that they didn't really have a voice. Um, so he's done a really great job going back and forth in between the student council and the s- school council to kind of try to get students to become more active in, um, you know, the thought process and decision-making in the school, so I just wanted to commend him and also his partner in crime, Ashley Tester, who couldn't be here this evening. Um, also, um, the co-chair, Masha Montgomery, had other commitments, so she wasn't able to be here either, but um, she's finishing a very long, long stint with Stacy Middle School and the school council, so I wanted to publicly thank her as well as, um, Ryan McHale, Beth Stachav and Elizabeth Warren for being so dedicated, and they're at the end of their their terms now. Um, so here we are, ready to talk about a little of this and a little of that. Um, Stacy Middle School's population is growing as we sit here. Uh, we're over a thousand sixty students for three grades. Um, so things are moving and grooving, if it's okay with you. Um, I just wanted to take a moment to commend one of our retiring teachers, Marilyn Gilman, she'll be retiring after a really great career.
Ah, Miss Gilman.
Um, I just wanted to publicly acknowledge everything she's done for our kiddos. Um, also, Helen Tebow did something just really so fabulous, following, I mean, awesome stuff from the French Club, the Music Kids. Stacy's Got Talent, right, there's a lot going on, every every kitten in every building has just something strong and wonderful to share. Sometimes it just takes them a little bit longer to want to do that, so, um, Helen did something with Souls for Souls, where she connected it with an art project, and students were very creative and innovative, making their own shoe designs. If, you know, if they were going to be in a shoe company, what would they do, uh, I think it was through Converse, and, um, then also did a civic-minded activity that was aligned with that academic project and collected over a hundred shoes for the needy, so. I also wanted to commend that out loud as well. And then tomorrow, we have our semi-formal farewell dance, I can't believe we're already talking about the end of the year stuff, it's, this is our last class twenty twenty-three that's been at Stacy for four years, so it's a little bittersweet. The biggest class and the last one for the four-year project, so, good stuff happening, good s- So the first thing, if it's okay with you, we're going to have Andres', um, review the handbook changes. Nothing really, really significant, just some little little things, but I think it's important that we highlight them, and if you have any questions, we can address them as a team, okay, Andres?
Okay, um, thanks for having me. I, it's on page sixteen on the emergency form, there's a added phone number. An extension. On page twenty-two, uh, under the heading promotion and retention of students, any eighth grade students who just not meet the academic standards for promotion will not participate in the step-up ceremony. On, uh, page twenty-three, family portal, there is an added link. On page thirty-three, uh, under the heading absentee call-in procedure, the times move from eight thirty AM to seven AM for parents to call in. On page thirty-eight, under the heading of levels of intervention and consequences of violations of the Code of Student Conduct, um, we're removing the two options of behavior intervention resource center from seven fifteen to seven forty AM, and academic intervention resource center from seven fifteen to seven forty AM. On page thirty-eight, under the heading disciplinary consequences and due process, we're on, doing it like Woodland did, and we're adding the addition of smartwatches, Fitbits, et cetera, should not be used for anything other than telling time during school hours. Also on page thirty-eight, under the same heading disciplinary consequences and due process, we're, um, adding that c- um, consumption of food or drink in the building or classroom, excluding cafeteria, unless you have a, unless during designated snack time or medical waiver. On page fifty-one, under the heading bullying, um, we're putting the whole, the full policy in the handbook. On page fifty-three, about the passports, we're a- adding that students may pick up a lost passport form from the guidance minis- administrative assistant and return signed form to grade level assistant principal or prin- or principal for a new passport. On page fifty-three, under the heading passports, we're changing, um, the principal or assistant part to homeroom teaching.
Does anyone have any questions on those proposals at all?
No. Thank you so much.
Okay, so for the school improvement plan, this is the third year of a three-year plan, so there's not a lot of changes. Um, on page sixteen, there's something about, there's a very short line in the accreditation self-assessment process. We're going to remove that, we're recommending with your permission to remove that as m- the middle school no longer participates in the accreditation process. The other thing actually is a proposal to do in addition to this, um, school improvement plan. On page ten, oh, we felt it was important to add another curriculum initiative for, just for the school year. Um, basically, the im- the purpose of this is to reduce the gap between District EL and FEL student growth percentages in grade six on the math emca- uh, math emcast by five percentage points by spring of twenty-twenty. So the intent is try to close the, um, the growth percentile gap that we're seeing with our students compared to the state percentage gap. So, um, Mrs. Norjani and I had a conversation about this and we've had an implementation of a new math program to address our neediest subgroup populations. So that is in place as well as a curriculum that's gonna be utilized by that person. So we felt it would be appropriate to implement something more curriculum-based with a really identified goal to see if we can try to reduce that achievement gap. Um, prior to making that decision, a team of people participated in a closing the achievement gap professional development at the MSAA this winter to try to make sure we kinda mobilize the team to be ready to to do this. I believe this also will support one of the notions that were identified in the coordinated program review. So I do ask for your consideration and that certainly could be put on hold, but I thought maybe it would be relevant to put that in. Those really would be the only changes in the three-year plan, we're going to the the third year of a three-year plan.
Okay.
Everything else stays the same, uh, Lisa's become very, uh, incorporated into the entire social, emotional learning thing at Stacy Middle School. We, four years ago, we did a lot of research on, uh, what program would be the best thing in terms of a research-based program and the team that reviewed everything, uh, there was a lot of counselors and health teachers on that from our from our school and they they kind of went with the second step program. So here we are, I can't believe we're already in the third year and it was four years ago. I think Chris had a lot to to do with that, believe it or not, so here we are, Chris, right? Isn't time flies? So those are the the, um, changes on that improvement plan, nothing more than that, okay? Do you wanna ask any questions on that or discuss it or?
I'll open it up to the committee, does anyone have any questions?
Just wanted to go.
Chris?
S- ag- yeah, Nancy, can you talk a little bit, just on the, I'm trying to remember now, the the curriculum and planning, is it, wh- what, I guess the, kinda just from an oversight.
On page ten?
Yeah.
Yes, the new addition?
Um, yeah, I just, sorry, I'm going through, I got like two hundred pages worth of stuff here, that's why, so, that's why.
No, there's a lot of pages, I'm sorry, yeah.
Can you just speak a little bit more towards that curriculum development, I guess from an upper level of where where we are?
Yeah, absolutely, I love it. In terms of the.
I guess where we were three or four years ago, we when we started to develop it, to where we are now, to where our finished product will be.
The, um. Are we talking about SEL or the?
Um.
I just wanna make sure I understand the the question.
Yeah, that's why I'm trying to make sure that I'm part of the.
So is it the, um, recommendation for adding a new thing into the plan or are we talking about the second step curriculum?
The first, so just, I guess, yeah, we talking more the general curriculum model, tr- that's what I was trying to remember how how it was and I apologize for the need for clarity here.
No, no, no. So I'm gonna kinda go with what's on page ten and talk a little bit about that.
Yeah.
So in terms of why we kind of discussed doing this, the biggest thing we wanna try to do in terms of curriculum
Yeah.
is to utilize curriculum that's gonna allow students to meet grade level expectations, right?
Right.
I mean, that's always the goal.
Sure.
And what we wanted to do is provide another in addition to math teacher and this math teacher's going to be able to target our neediest subgroups. So instead of having one math intervention teacher, which the class is called Math Literacy, we are ha- going to have two next year. And one is going to work with the standard math intervention, so if someone's struggling, that's their in addition to math class. Still getting your grade level content class in math, but this is like another layer, that in addition to, to try to fill the gaps that that student must be, you know, might be experiencing and with the hope to try to get them out. Um, it's not, it's it's not a life sentence if they're in that in addition to course, if they meet the challenges and fill the gaps, they can be moved out as well. Um, so what we're doing with this new proposal is the teacher who's going to be running this, um, is actually probably, I would classify as one of our master math teachers, which is awesome, 'cause just in my opinion, I think those those are the people who should be teaching our neediest students, okay? So, um, the intent behind this new position is there's going to be layers of students and right now in the math intervention program, it's twice out of six days that you're gonna get your in addition to. These kiddos are gonna get six out of six days, so they're gonna miss one special. Um, we're talking about our very neediest students who are still gonna be in the grade level content math class, but we're gonna be adding this in addition to intensive in addition to to fill the gaps. Whether there's live students or students who are coming from other countries, who may have like, coming in with perhaps a grade three or grade four or grade five math ability, we're trying to catch them up using that in addition to model. Um, some students, depending on their level, will go into a four to six model, right? So every day they're still going to have a special. Now, the cool thing having two people is, let's just say the neediest group is starting to make progress, we can bump them into the other classroom and then they can move back out. So that's the model that we're going to go with and pilot next year, um, hence why we thought it might be relevant to put this in, okay? And that's a really good question, I hope I answered it.
You did, yes, no, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Okay. Um, and the material's just arrived yesterday for that, um, teacher, so she's all excited. She was already on it during lunchtime today.
Yeah. Excellent.
Okay, good question?
Yes, thank you, yeah.
Anybody else on on that?
No, I think we're good.
Okay, wonderful.
Oh, Meg.
I just wanna say thank you for your use of service to Stacy Middle School and I wish you the most success in your new role.
Um. Thank you so much, I appreciate that an awful lot.
Yeah, thank you.
Are we voting?
Sure.
Okay, great, so I need a motion, um.
Motion.
Chris, second. Meg? All in favor?
Okay, wonderful, and then the two last things, 'cause I wanna get my kiddo here, it's been a long day for him. Um, so appendix A, appendix B, okay, appendix A is the accomplishments on the existing school improvement plan. Um, so the Stacy Middle School teachers completed the curriculum bias state assessment training. I'm just gonna do a couple of highlights, it would be at nauseam if I read everything, all the great things that happened above and beyond the S I P. Um, so we did, and then we also had a team of people do a curriculum bias review meeting uh, with the curriculum team leaders as well as the curriculum coordinator, trying to get things ready for review anytime we purchase new materials. Um, we're in, going into the third year pilot of the second step curriculum. This year we had five lessons implemented by our S I S P providers and Lisa Kincaid, I should say Mrs. Kincaid, I'm sorry, um, joined us. So these are some of the highlights from this year's S I, um, SEL initiative with second step. The seeds of happiness assembly, every grade level got that and that was a wonderful start. Um, every grade level got a multimedia assembly called It's My Life and the focus was on respect. Um, in addition to that, every grade level student, um, received five lessons on the following topics, making mistakes, my unhelpful thoughts, people you don't like, online bullying and digital friendships. So every grade level got those five lessons as well as the other two things that we identified. Um, the SWAT team, what Lisa was referencing, that came out of the wellness wellness initiative. They're so excited, they can't wait to do things, they have already made worry stones and another product and they wanna hand that out to every student, um, next year, which was stellar, they were like busy little bees doing it. Um, and speaking of busy bees, the SWAT emblem, if you haven't seen that photo, that is a student design, which is stellar. So another really wonderful thing that our kiddos do. Um, we expanded the family game board night to include family game and backyard game night. Um, so we had almost two hundred family and kids participating in that event. So last year was the pilot to that, trying to get more families into the school, interacting with their students and, um, each other, and that was a really huge success. Um, in terms of professional development, we had two online courses, we've been doing a lot of piloting with online courses and student, I mean, the teachers really seemed to like that format. Um, on motivating defiant and disruptive students to learn, sixty-six student, uh, teachers signed up for that. And then also motivating the unmotivated learner and twenty teachers took on an online course on that. Uh, more importantly, we had in-house personnel offer two trainings, one in January and one in May, on self-regulation and fostering emotional control in our students, um, trying to develop common language in terms of addressing that. Um, appendix B was more more so for safety. Safety drills, we had a, um, fall, we had two fire drills, in the spring we had a fire drill last week. We did a lockdown drill September fourteenth in addition to that. The teams, um, meet with their their kiddos and talk about the fire drill and actually walk them out to the site. Um, I would like to publicly thank the Milford Police Department and the Milford Fire Department. Um, the wonderful thing about Millville, uh, excuse me, Memorial Elementary School getting their new playground, um, we didn't discover until right before, when the last couple of toys went in, that it totally was going to change the way we have to do our fire drill. So I wanted to commend our service providers, um, the police and fire, they came to to meet with me in August and to review our new plan. So that went really well and it's it's changed and, um, you have access to the draft of the crisis management protocol, so you can understand everything that we're doing, it's it's very much in there, okay? Um, in terms of training about keeping our kiddos safe, Stacy has purchased purchased ten Motorola portable radios that have a direct line to the Milford Police Department. I would like to publicly thank Timothy Now, a Milford High School graduate who, um, aligned and kind of, I don't even know how to use that, that specific talk about getting it lined up for us. He did that as a donation out of the goodness of his heart, he does work for Motorola, so I really very much appreciate that partnership. Um, and those ten Motorolas are spread out through the building and it's becoming very lucrative for us in terms of our campus aid, connecting with our nurse about kids coming in from recess for medications, it's it's wonderful as well as with our PD department, so it's it's really wonderful. I wanted to publicly thank the school committee as well as central office for providing Stacy Middle School with a part-time campus aid. Um, having that campus aid has made worlds of difference in terms of recess and eyes. A lot of times we're we're moving and grooving as an administrative team dealing with discipline at the middle level. She's always out there at recess time, she's the starting point at recess, so we never worry that someone's not gonna be out there when the kids start going out there. Um, also I wanted to publicly thank you for the additional adjustment counselor, it's made incredible amounts of differences at Stacy. Um, the counselor who was working last year had about a hundred eighty kids on his caseload, so I just wanted to thank you, it's really made it a little bit more effective and I think quick dealing with our kids who are in crisis, so I can't thank you from the bottom of my heart enough. Um, also the cris- crisis management plan that you have within your electronics. Um, we continue, we're revising that a little bit, the team met last year full. One person from every cluster is on that team, the custodian, a cafeteria worker, um, a secretary, a nurse, um, administration is on that, as well as a member of the Milford Public Library, the Milford Youth Center as well as Saint Mary's. So we met as a team a couple of weeks ago and we decided to make a little bit revision. If we ever have to evacuate, we have one place, I'm not gonna say this publicly, if you don't mind, you have it in your your program. And then our second alternative site, we are making an adjustment because of the sheer numbers of our building. We found if we moved somewhere else and changed it, it would be more effective. The plan with the crisis management team is to do evacuation practices. It will be very challenging to do a thousand sixty kids at the same time, so we're we're going to talk about it again as a management team. Um, and then encourage the cluster, so you have one representative for each cluster who will be able to manage that and then they can do that in the beginning of the year for a team, okay? So I just wanted to let you know that will be, that's in the works for the fall as well, okay? Does does anyone have any questions on either of the appendices? Okay.
Alright, thanks Nancy.
Thank you so much, I appreciate your time and.
Thank you Nancy. Thank you Nancy.
Yeah, I hope you all have a lovely summer, if I don't bump into you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, oh, sorry. We need a motion.
I thought we did that.
Didn't we do that?
We did, we have, we're good.
We did it before, I think we're, yeah, it was just more of an update on the.
Yeah, I think, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I'm like, oh, I'm like, look, kids, big Ben.
Very good.
Very good, but you know, Meg, so before you go though, I do wanna say, I I also wanna say thank you for all your hard work at Stacy and I wish you the best in your new position and, um, you know, thanks for everything.
Thank you.
I know, um, it, you know, it was a pleasure to see you, I I n- I'm just speaking as a parent, you know, over, uh, Jacob's time there, so, thank you for everything.
Mm-hmm. I really appreciate it, um, good golly, fourteen years went by very quickly.
Yeah.
That's how long I was there, you don't even realize it till you stop and look at it, but next year will be my thirtieth year in Milford and, um, I just really am very thankful for the opportunities I've had. Lots of different people to thank, too many to to say out loud, but please know that I very much value Milford and I continue to be very, very loyal to it.
We appreciate that.
As, you know, so it's important, okay?
Thank you so much.
So thanks so much.
Thanks, honey.
And I I have people making me feel old sitting across there, 'cause I taught them, so. That's what you say, you still look good, right? Okay, guys, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, report of the superintendent of schools.
So I've got three quick updates for the committee, the first one, everybody has a sheet that has a lot of red on it, is the best way to describe it, and I just wanna give, um, the committee requested an update on kind of school choice and what grades are closed. And so a couple of things, right, and this is as of May seventh, so this number is actually higher, but we have forty th- four thousand three hundred seventy-six students enrolled pre-K through twelve, as well as sixty-two students who are placed in out-of-district special education placements that we monitor, um, regularly. Um, there's no choice, there's no school choice in pre-K and currently we have closed grades nine, eleven and twelve. And we're we're closely watching the churn rate over the next several weeks and being cautious about bringing choice in. Um, you can see the numbers and we've been talking about this a little bit since probably December-ish, that we're up about two hundred students in the district and it's probably a little more than that right now. And we have kind of a large group of students who have registered for the nineteen-twenty school year already. Our k- our kindergarten numbers are probably trending a little higher, but not alarmingly so. So they're probably gonna be somewhat similar to the, um, three hundred-ish number you see from the the class of, uh, this this current school year, the eighteen, nineteen school year. Um, what we're doing is we collect the, um, we collect the school choice in requests and obviously if anybody's requesting twelve, eleven or nine, we're we're closing those just completely. And like I said, we're being very conservative in terms of, um, you know, students we're bringing in at this point because the numbers are just higher than they've ever been. And basically what we're doing is we're, and this is just another piece of, we're looking at the number of classrooms per grade and kind of just really watching class size and we're also watching like, we know we get, over the past few years, we have numbers of, you know, arrivals in July and August, arrivals in September, kind of all the way through, and we're kind of keeping that in mind too. It's the same reason why we keep like some classes where we know we're gonna see additional students join us. This year, those classes are over-enrolled because we just had larger numbers come in. And so I think there's two things we're watching, uh, we're watching the churn rate and we're watching to see if last year's jump in students is an aberration or is this some, is this a trend that we're gonna be looking at over the next couple of years? And right now, we just don't know. Because again, our enrollment has been pretty consistent, it's kind of varied about fifty or sixty students a year over the last like decade or so and we're up over two hundred this year. Laura, go ahead.
So, um, we've closed nine, but we've left ten open, like ten, grade ten has more students than grade nine, why is that?
So y- so, y- so you gotta remember, it's the the current aid is the, next year's nine.
Oh, you mean the next year?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay. Okay.
S- so there's a good chance we're probably not gonna take some s- like students in, you know, the, so they'd be grade eleven basically, so eleven and twelve are gonna be closed.
Mm-hmm. Right. Correct, okay, got it.
And we usually close eleven and twelve, just kind of, just as a practice.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Other questions before we?
Ind- in the minute, Chris?
Of. Once a student's in on school choice, y- y- is he basically grandfathered in?
So once, yeah, once you choice in, you're in the district.
Yeah, okay.
Just like once you choice out, you're kind of like in the district, you choice out too.
Yeah. Yeah, so a student that, you know, say a student.
Yeah, so a student that, you know, say a student chooses in, but all of a sudden we have a massive influx in that grade level.
Once we say Once we say yes, they're yes.
They're a yes, okay, just wanted to ensure on that, thank you.
Yeah. That's a good question. So we can't make those determinations year to year, 'cause it's just not fair to families.
Correct, yeah.
'Cause they're making the commitment to come over to Milford.
Yep.
And so we wanna accommodate the needs of their year.
Okay. Anybody else? Hmm?
Alright.
Well, in the future, then, would it be possible to get
Oh.
This chart where we could see like the numbers, um high grade of school choice students, their升学?
Of l- like num- Yeah, we actually, I've given that to you before.
Okay.
So that's in those packets, I can, if you just shoot me an email, I can g- I can send you a copy of where where we're at.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you.
Alright.
Okay.
Alright, so second update, give me one second. Is the superintendent evaluation timeline, I believe? Yeah. So so basically um we're we're kind of discussing the process tonight and on June fifteenth, we'll pass um the evaluation out as well as the kind of documents, I gave you some of the document last year that kind of walk walk you through like different standards and indicators. And and then the goal is to have that back to um Jen Parsons by June thirtieth. And then in the July meeting, we'll do um my evaluation. Will be kind of the timeline. And obviously, if you get the materials, you have any questions, I'm more than happy to kind of answer those questions or walk you through it. I'm also gonna give you the um state level indicators and standards, so you kind of have that as like a benchmark as well. Alright.
Anybody have any questions on that?
Do we have that July meeting scheduled yet? Uh I think we do. Good.
Mr. Press, Mr. Chair, can we do also run dates for doing
Your goals for the subsequent year as part of that, just potential timeline?
Yeah, w- Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Yeah, if you could just check on that, July, I have not seen it, but
I need to do that, so our, what we um
Bring to Jen, to the chair person, is going to be June thirtieth, the deadline?
Correct, so it's basically, it's the week open period.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And I can send that out to everybody if you'd like to.
Yeah, that would be great, could you?
Yep. Alright, and the last piece is the um Stacy uh middle school search update. So right now we have um a new assistant principal which was um newly put into the budget for nineteen twenty and we're doing that search as well as um a then a new principal, as Nancy was uh moved into a central office position. So we received twenty seven applicants for the principal position and fifty two applicants for the assistant principal position. A team of more than twenty administrators and teachers screened the candidates and identified eleven principal semifinalists and sixteen assistant principal semifinalists. An interview team made up of twenty eight teachers, parents, administrators, school committee members and community members who've done interviews, I think Joe alluded to that, um he was on the committee as a vis- as well as uh Jim, um identified uh semifinalists for the assistant principal and the principal. I'm in contact with those folks and I've been kind of going back and forth, so um I I should have an update for the community um tomorrow in terms of the timeline for um, we're gonna do forums, I believe, Monday night, which is June tenth. And I'll be announcing who the folks are on Saturday. And we wanna give the finalists an opportunity to speak with, you know, their districts, their communities, their supervisors to kind of uh, you know, share that they're 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 finalists in Milford for either the assistant principal or the principal search. Um we're kind of condensing the timeline, sometimes if we have an earlier um posting date, we're able to kind of spread it out a little bit more, but we're heading to the end of the school year and we wanted to get um the candidates into like a school day. The last week of school is not an ideal school day for for in any school building in America, but we're going to uh, you know, deal, work with the cards that were dealt with. Um I, and I wanna echo Joe, I think the pre-screening, you know, teachers and administrators did a fantastic job and very thoughtful. Um you know, you could tell they spent a a lot of time on it. And I I and I thought the interview committee was kind of very thoughtful and your feedback. It's it's always fascinating to me how like one group will perceive a candidate versus another group and you know, and there's a lot of factors and variables that go into that. But one of the reasons why we take multiple steps in the process is we wanna get as many eyes on these candidates and as much feedback as we possibly can because it just, I I I think it leads to the best process. So any questions?
I'm sorry, I'm reaching here, how many sort of are the final round?
So um I don't wanna say that number right now until we kind of finalize with the with the candidates, so it's gonna be somewhere between three and four for both.
Okay. Understood, sorry, okay.
Okay, and then are we publicly advertising the June tenth date as an opportunity for people to come?
Yeah, so I'm I'm sending that out, I'm sending that out tomorrow, I'd I'd send it out, I think, it's at some point earlier as well, but I'll send a reminder via Twitter and and direct message to the families.
Great, okay. Okay. Great. Okay.
And then we'll send out the bios like we did over the weekend, once I get kind of half of them just out.
Excellent, even just to have to save the date, 'cause it's Monday.
Yeah, 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 and and it's gonna be tricky.
Okay. Yeah.
There's n- there's no two ways about it.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, I think we're good.
Alright.
Report of the assistant superintendent for business.
So for the committee's uh approval this evening, we have six warrants that total one hundred eighty seven thousand six hundred fifty five dollars and thirty two cents.
You got a motion? Second, uh Meg, second by Laura? Any discussion? All in favor?
The committee also has a request for course reimbursement in the amount of twelve thousand three hundred seventy six dollars and thirty five cents.
You got a motion?
Motion, yeah.
Meg, second by, or go Joe, sorry, you're next. Any discussion, all in favor?
Just w- one quick note.
Oh, sorry, there was a question, not a mo-
No, just saying, just thank, you know, that's all right, no, just thank you to all the teachers that uh, you know, spend the time to, you know, take these courses.
Absolutely.
So just to be noted on that.
And the committee also has a list of um any hires or um terminations that we've had, no um vote is required.
S- s- All the vendors.
And we do have uh gifts, Mr. Chair. Gifts.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, you have them.
He was talking to me. We need a motion on the gifts.
Nancy, we're gonna
There's quite a few, so we usually read them um and then do them all together.
Gifts.
Hold them all together.
Okay, the first gift is from the American Heart Association, uh the name of the gift is the jump, the uh jump rope for heart and that is for a very generous three hundred dollars. The second gift is the Museum of Science uh for Woodland Elementary. A total gift of, that is a very generous nine hundred dollars, thank you very much. Uh the third gift is Alliance Energy LLC ExxonMobil for M H S math and science for five hundred dollars. The uh donor is Michael Goetheer, Family and Community Network gift for sixty dollars, thank you very much. The next gift is Katie Parker, President of Network Helpers for a thousand dollars for summer playgroups, thank you very much. And the last gift is Do Kind Inc. uh for Woodland for picnic tables for five hundred dollars, thank you very much. So can we get a motion on the gifts? Joe?
Second.
Chris? All in favor? Alright. Okay, so now we're gonna move on to the school committee operational goals update.
I think uh Mr. Chair, just in the interest of time, we really covered this at our last meeting, I think the only thing to reiterate um for the group's benefit is just the second round of office hours on Tuesday evening from seven to eight P M., um but otherwise, there's no substantial updates um from our last meeting.
Awesome. You should advertise Chris and I as a reason to come down.
Yeah, where's that located again?
At the Milford Town Library, downstairs.
I hope we're heard the call.
I think that might hurt if people knew it was just Chris and I, so. Uh we're we're gonna uh move past school committee updates, we don't ha- uh so sorry, subcommittee updates for this evening as we don't have any. Um and we are gonna go right to future agenda items, anyone? Yeah, okay, any old business? No, okay. And can I get a motion for adjourn- adjournment? Now we do have executive session.
Usually roll call for that.
So we'll have to do a roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes, yes, okay. Uh so tonight's meeting is being bri- oops, that was the wrong one. Yeah, so we will, we will end this uh the regular session, we will not be returning, we are going into executive session, so thank you everyone. And we need uh, we're all set for that, I'm set, thank you.